Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greiner.
Here.
And Mrs. June.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, what's been made with second all in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Alright, so first up, we kind of restructured our council meetings a little bit different. As people know, we've gone to two meetings a month with our planning sessions for council. But we wanted to do departmental updates overall. And this first part is Chief Fitzgerald giving a departmental update. After that, we have a work session by Mrs. Klein with regards to a discretion of criminal activity. And then after that, we have an update on Waterloo file operation. I think we wanted to say that it's important that we don't wait till the end of the year until budget to review about what's taking place with our department. So you are first up on here, so take it away, Chief.
Great, thank you, Dr. Gerald Fitzgerald, Chief of Police. I'm going to give you a sort of mid-year report on the police department. Alright, this year's summary, summarizing our staffing is we're all still. There's been a lot of questions about who we have worked with, who we need to be working with. Make it clear, we are authorized at 123 total police officers, which 118 officers are currently hired. And the hiring mix is down to five or six candidates that we're going to be ready for hiring as of the end of this year. So we should be able to make up our staffing deficit with this next past year. The deployable staff has been just been an object of concern, I think, in terms of. If you, what that means, what that means is 105 total officers we have that can work where you have, you know, along the street, also. I say function because we have individuals injured, long-term injured, with disability, or are at the police academy. So when you're authorizing us additional hiring of people, it could be a good reason to look at is authorizing us people that can start now versus people that are being able to start in the months that follow because of their attendance at the police station. So we already had a low level of deployable staff because of obviously they turn over this year, the retirements. That happens in departments, especially every 20 to 25 years, see people that are those that retire. That retire, they work very hard to, you can see, in this, that's where we stand here. I wanted also to see in terms of ICMA, International City Manager Assistance, rule of thumb as to where staffing stands in cities of our size. And if you look at the minimum and maximum, they took, including 60 towns and average population, 67,755, worth column, which is the median. So we pretty much stand right at that mean of departments at the end of that mean. Most of those officers are 100,000 population, would be at about 182 officers or 183 if you round up. So that gives you an idea of how hard our guys are working compared to cities like size and, you know, what other departments look at as far as staffing is concerned. Later on, you'll see an update from me that's more than an update, it's a strategic plan. And part of this, you read now, it's 15 pages, but part of this strategic plan does have a staffing recommendation and a detailed staffing study in it. So I hope to present that to you within the next two weeks. Crime, which is always at the tip of our tongue. Waterloo, you're looking at Waterloo crime last year versus this year year-to-date. So the crimes have not been significantly higher in certain areas or lower in certain areas, as opposed to what you need. You had shootings. Yeah, shootings, when someone shot, you had a repeated assault. So my aggravated assault is typically higher. Just starting off, the first few months of this year, right, of 2021, we've seen a decrease rate decline in the numbers of total crimes. I have a more detailed crime statistics page that I did not put into this slide because it's very hard to read, but I will give that out to you for some of the details in the upcoming sessions, as well as references to crime. But one positive is that even through the COVID year, although, you know, we had some noteworthy crimes, crime even over the last few years, the last five years, that we've taken a good hard look at, the crime is steadily slowing down. Here again, you'll see breakdown of crime against property, crime against persons, crime against society, really distressing and give you something to look at to show that 2021 versus 2020, you know, and here we think protection-wise, we're not thinking, you know, we are here today versus where we were last year. Arrests have been down in certain areas. Some of the areas that we're down in are a direct result of, I believe, our community orientation. We can't arrest our way out of a problem as soon as, comparatively, we look at the years, arrests just being down for, for two thousand, in particular, between 2020 and 2018, having a low number of arrests for certain things. That, that really, you know, although you're looking at a year's worth of, this is a year-to-date worth of arrests, in both years, we're trending downward in the total arrests this year. That's a good sign for, for an agency.
Chief, can you put the mic?
I'm sorry.
It may fall. You could put the closer.
I got it, okay. Shootings versus shots fired. Let me clarify, shooting is when someone is hit in most cities. We count shootings as when you have a gunshot call and we're able to find the shooting and the gunshot call is telling, so make that a shooting call. A shots fired call would be, I'm sorry, I should correct that, a shooting call would also be a call where someone has actually struck. So someone struck, we have evidence that an actual shooting occurred. Shots fired call would be a call where we weren't able to confirm whether or not there was a shooting. Therefore, shots fired calls or shooting calls are slightly up. You'll see the shooting calls with injuries at five, and that's up year-to-date. So again, trending-wise, we're right there where we were. Last year, we can never be satisfied with where we are, we can always do better, but that is, that is the facts. That is where we are right now versus last year's. Our year-to-date major cases, these are the cases where our detectives are handling cases that have followed up and require intensive investigative research for homicides. In the entire 2020, which is the COVID year, it ate homicides year-to-date as if maybe three, sexual assaults, year-to-date. Now, mind you, 2020 status for the entire year of 2020 in the slide, and the year-to-date stats for 2021 are year-to-date C. That our year-to-date stats are roughly in line with half of what we had in 2021, in some cases, less than half. Again, the robbery area and in the child pornography area, which I think are important parameters, we're how our folks do that. Many of you don't know, we have approved very often some overtime on our Safe Streets programs, and this is to just get you a little more insight into what that means. We have one officer assigned to the ATF task force. They handle gun-related crimes along with our guys in the VCAT unit, we'll get to that in a second. So our ATF person is a Waterloo police officer assigned to ATF who specifically works on cases here in the city for illegal gun sales, whether they're done from a gun store, whether they're sales are done through straw purchase, which is someone going in to purchase firearms for someone else, someone normally not legally able to possess a firearm, gets another person to purchase them. We've had tremendous, tremendous success in taking guns off the street, one of the statutes we've heard lately is over 500 some of our guns in five years. And that's due to our partnerships with the FBI, with ATF, and with the US Marshals Task Force. You'll see we have two officers assigned to the FBI Task Force, one works in the Detroit County Task Force, in other words, in violent crimes. Those officers, along with the officer in ATF, they can adopt cases that perhaps on a state level wouldn't receive as many years in sentence. So we have more of a bite, more of an arm to go out and deter people from easily crimes that they know or they suspect may be handled federally. So our benefit from having officers on here, which you prove very often again, with overtime that's expended, that the feds reimburse them, is this partnership to ensure that offenders, high-level offenders are listened to and dealt with. In 2021, I worked to deal out with the US Marshals Task Force. They have our VCAT unit, who I just reassigned to our Detective Division, to work as, they're basically US Marshals as well. They are sworn in as US Marshals. They can travel outside of, outside of this jurisdiction, outside of the state, to pursue criminals on charges that we have from Iowa here in this region. So in addition to having a VCAT unit that is adept at pulling firearms off the street, making a lot of arrests, conducting investigations, the VCAT unit is now able to stretch their investigatory powers to pursue the criminals that flee out of state. This has been a real boon to us because our detectives and investigators frequently travel to handle assignments outside of the state and just have any added teeth of knowing that if you get caught with a gun or you get caught with drugs, a gun and drugs or whatever in the city of Waterloo, and you are a known offender, you're looking at a serious federal time from many different angles. So here we have the FBI, the ATF, and now the US Marshals. So again, just a Waterloo-specific focus in deterring and arresting those involved in violent crimes. Many of you also know that we instituted a crisis prevention unit, staffed with three people from Elevate. The Elevate folks work with us basically seven days a week. They move days off in between, obviously, but they're on call with a police officer who's assigned with them during their tour of duty or during their shift. That police officer, when in obvious, or a case that we suspect is mental health-related, is assigned to us, will go out with the Elevate person to handle that particular offense many times. In the past, we were sending two people that are two police officers out to the scenes to handle events where a child with mental health issues, let's say, refused to go to school, or someone with mental health issues refused to take their medication. We now have a proactive means by which we can reduce some of the call loop, the follow-ups to ensure that we are addressing those with mental health issues and homeless problems proactively in the city of Waterloo. We're the only city in entirety of our jurisdiction here in Blackhawk County that does this, one of the few cities in the state that has dedicated these type of resources to CIT. You'll see it has no additional funding required. That's a big, huge deal for us because we're not hiring any additional civilian staff to come in. We were able to broker and leverage our relationship with Elevate to make this happen. So our city is really set up nicely to proactively handle some of the responses that have ended in suicide by police and others by looking at this through a different lens, and that is one of understanding, that is one of ensuring that our, all of, all of our police officers have engaged in CIT training, and we have specialists that have had 40-hour training. Goal of getting everyone to 40-hour training. I'm sure we have some questions. I tried to brief this onto the new rules, and I want Kelly to kill me. Or would you like to insert questions for our criminal justice component?
Chief, good presentation, good stats, I appreciate it. And I love the crisis intervention program, I think that's innovative and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
But I did have a citizen call me on this saying they thought that this was funded through a grant through Elevate and that at some point that money might run out. Do you know anything about, and what would we do then?
Well.
That's my first question, and I have one more follow-up.
Okay. Definitely, I mean, it is funded through a grant through Elevate. We were, we worked with Mr. Lincoln over at Elevate to actually support that grant application. And I don't worry as much about the grant expiring or them not being able to re-up the grant. What I would tell you is my hope is that others would join into this grant and collaboratively attack, attack mental health as it relates to us as being first responders to many mental health issues in this city. You know, we're only one of the very few in Iowa, Joe, would you say two total other cities in Iowa maybe have a mental health in, or three? So again, the grant funds for this type of program per se in this state are not being expended for this purpose. So we're pretty unique and I'm, I feel like with the, what we're also capturing now, the number of times we use this program to help bolster our grant funding in the future. I think what you'll see is we have many, many more responses that are mental health-related than we've ever captured, and now you'll see it at the end of the year. And I think it'll provide good support for, you know, Elevate and any other of the partners around in the Blackhawk County that wish to participate as well to do so.
That's a great idea, and I congratulate you and your people for pursuing that, it's wonderful.
Thank you.
I did also, and this might just be my misunderstanding on how to read these stats, but early on, your third slide, you have the ICMA staffing study?
Yes, ma'am.
If I was reading it right, the means is the average for city our size. That's the first column, and the fourth column is us. I, I was shocked by the difference, like the index crime rate, the mean was over 3,000 and ours was only 295. And then the last one, the CFS rate was over 1,000 and ours was only 138. Why that huge disparity? I mean, are we just that much better?
I, I do think that we're, and that laugh wasn't to say no. The laugh is to say that I think that we believe we're in a lot worse position than we are. I'm not saying that we don't need staff, I'm not saying, I think that, you know, over the last five years, you'll, you'll see that Major Leibold and the rest of the command staff have done a really good job of mitigating some of the problems that hit those other cities in that mean as well. That's, I put that stat in there and left those because those were very telling. You know, it's 67,000 on average, you know, population, that aligned perfectly almost with our city. And it just gives you some perspective on what crime looks like or responses look like in other cities and the volume that they deal with. Can we get better at when we are on a location, solving the problem and moving on? Yes, we can. Do we need to develop and devote more time to community policing? That's why we have the MPO program, and yes, that'll eat into some of our call time and everything else. You'll see in that staffing study to come, how much, because I, departments should at least be spending about 40% of the time actively pursuing community policing, 60% on calls.
Well, and I love that community policing program, we need to be commended for that as well.
Thank you. I, I just think, again, you know, when you're putting all this into perspective and you're looking at ICMA and you're looking at how city managers are looking at police departments and questioning how much you need, this is sort of, and I put there a rule of thumb for them, and that's a good, I, I have other, other formulas that show higher numbers, other that show slightly lower, but for the most part, yeah, I mean, 182 officers in a normal department in that range, right, as opposed to us having 123. So our guys are doing more with less, and you should be very proud of that.
Yeah.
Chief, I just had a question on the crisis intervention units in the Elevate, where are they housed in the station?
There's a, there's one room that we use for interrogation. So again, they don't have a real home, however, if you're not using that, they're able to be inside the station and utilize that area to write the reports. My hope is, and, and this is what we drive home with our folks, is that they're to be on the street as often as they can, for as long as they can. They're obviously going to be on some calls that don't necessitate an Elevate response, but the, the aim is having them on the street and not having an officer have to run back to headquarters to retrieve an Elevate person.
They're not NCIC certified?
No, they're not.
So how do we maintain that integrity within the vehicle and within the station?
We've, we've provided, that's why they have that, that area that I'm talking about, where they're to be in when nothing else is going on. If they're in the car, the people that are operating those vehicles know that pursuant to SEGIS, we have to make sure that they are not receiving any returns on the police computer. So we have considered all of that, and we understand that along with making sure that we get them fingerprinted and things like that, that those are the ways in which we can, you know, maintain our integrity as far as SEGIS is concerned.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Chief. First, I want to commend you, your whole department, for all that you all do. It's a very important job, and I know I stand with my six other colleagues and all of us in applauding the hard work that your men and women in uniform do every day. I have two questions. So the first one is, we have a couple of liaisons. I know an LGBTQ liaison with the police department and a downtown liaison, and I'm, I'm blanking on the third one, I believe we have three. Could you talk a little bit more about how those programs are working and how they're interacting with the population, the specific populations they're supposed to work with? And then I have a second question.
Well, the LGBTQ liaison or QIA-plus liaison has gotten a good response. I've gotten emails saying that they have met our liaison and that they have, and I say they, the people that have been responding to me about the proactive nature that our liaison has taken to introduce herself to people and to ensure that, you know, the community out there that goes underserved, like other communities, knows that we have dedicated an arm to them. The same way with homelessness liaison, that's the third that you were thinking of?
Thank you.
And in particular, our downtown liaisons, who we've had to call to step up a bit with the, you know, recent shooting that we had downtown, and in addition to that, our dedication to our three Ocean Cars, which are our downtown liaisons, we have a, another program we're running right now, and it's an overtime-based program, and we're going to be talking to the downtown business owners to see if we can keep it going with their help financially. And that's on Monday, I'm sorry, on Friday and Saturday nights, running at 11 to 3 for the bars let out and for us to be highly visible in the downtown area. So we've got a lot going on with, you know, not, I can tell you, you know, could we stand to have more people doing these things, of course, but we have to wear a lot of different hats. And our, our guys and gals have really been going out there trying to make themselves available to members of the community, and they've been seen. And as COVID has relented a little bit, we're going to have more of an opportunity to go out and just actively, or proactively, I should say, interact with, with people, and it's going to be huge. Our, I'll give you one event, we're going, we're primed to deal with the Juneteenth event, and when I say do that, we're going to be potentially helping them grill and give out food that we had donated by way of Tyson Foods. So this department has really stepped up and making sure that we not only have a relationship with the business owners, but also have a relationship with people who we normally, or in the past, didn't overtly try to engage with.
And I don't want to steal your thunder, but I know you rolled out the new program where specific officers are assigned to specific neighborhoods and areas. Can you just give us a, a little bit of an update on that? If it's coming out with your status report later, that's perfectly fine, just wanted to hear how that's also going.
It's going well, and I'm getting good feedback. I mean, someone sent, I think Mr. Amos just sent a, a message to me about a, a group that did not know who their liaison was. Well, we aim not to have that happen, but with the groups not meeting as frequently anymore, it's been very hard for some of those guys and gals to go out and meet the folks in the community that are running these meetings. And this has been the only jurisdiction that it has taken so long in just because of COVID. But without question, every area in the city has, you know, at least three MPOs that are going to be assigned to their particular area. So, you know, whether one can make it to a meeting or another can make it to a meeting, we, we're just, we intend to make sure, as Mr. Amos found out when I, when I emailed them immediately back, look, you tell me where those meetings are, I will make sure that the person that is in that particular area shows up with a lieutenant to explain the program and to also show that we're going to be consistent and be there, whether there's 10 people there or 100, we're going to go to those meetings and find out what's going on or what we can do to improve things in the community.
What meetings are you talking about? The neighborhood meetings?
Neighborhood association meetings that are already, many neighborhoods don't have an active association group.
But a lot of them do, yeah.
Yes, and we're hoping that the ones that do, our people can make those meetings now, we want that. But we also want to be sensitive to those areas that don't have meetings and use the officer as the means by which we gather community members, even if it's just to talk about certain criminal information that's going on in their community. If we have to be the attraction, we'll be the attraction. But we want to be actively engaged in what a community is going through and how we can even bridge city services with members of the community.
Alright, we'll go to Mrs. Klein, and then we'll transition into the next portion of this. I had a question also.
Something you said triggered a memory of a phone call that I got. You said that the Elevate people do their paperwork in the building, in that room, they don't do it in the cars.
I'm, I didn't say they didn't do it in the car. They may do some in the car, I haven't ridden with any of them, but they do have the ability to go in a room and complete paperwork.
Right. Someone called me a while back and said that the officers themselves are not being allowed to write, do their paperwork and their reports in the building anymore, that they're required to do them in the cars, and I thought I would just see what you say about that.
What I say is that our officers need to be on the street. We have prepared and given the officers the means by which they can do more of their work inside of the police vehicle, and I want them out on the street doing more of their work in the police vehicle. So they have not been restricted from coming in if someone told you that you were misinformed. However, they have been told that they need to be out on the street and utilize their computers in their cars to type the reports that are necessary. An officer here does an average of about two reports a day that can be done out in the street. You're welcome.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, okay. Chief, first of all, thank you for that prompt response that you gave me. But one of my questions is, prior to you becoming chief, there was this project called the Hail Mary Project, and I drove down Fifth Street, I saw the trailer sitting there. I'm just kind of wondering, what's the status of that? Is it going by the wayside? Has something happened with it or?
My understanding is, and I spoke to the officer that was a key part of that project, and it seemed like a great idea. I, I know that I could not take on doing the Hail Mary Project and some of the MPO-related duties right now, but it is not active and hasn't been active for a little bit. But the, the crux of the project and the, the goals, you know, that they stand for was something that seriously aligns with what we're trying to do as an organization. So I think you'll see in this strategic plan and aim to get that restarted as one of our goals. Each one of the command staff members will have, will be a goal champion and have different goals and action items they're going to be responsible for developing over the next five years.
Thank you. Mrs. Klein, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I called this work session, I feel that it's overdue to have a work session about the violence because I know we have a lot of wonderful things coming up this year in downtown Waterloo, and we've done so many things to attract people here, and of course, we had that murder on Fourth Street, and it just knocked everyone over. You know that violence seems to have been getting worse. I mean, I know in the calendar year, you compared last year with the first five months of this year, and the statistics, everything there seemed to be hitting on par with last year. We've only got five months in, which startled me. I wondered what we're, how we are handling it, I mean, what are we going to do when we have, what are we going to do when we have RAG, RAY coming and all of these big events to make sure people feel safe downtown? And then if you don't mind, and I didn't know whether it fit better in the last part of this or in this part, I do have some. of this or in this part, I do have some more personalized questions that I got phone calls on and would like to address.
Personalized questions?
Well, I mean, maybe I should just do those quick. Is it, I got a phone call. I get a lot of phone calls. And you're the source that should be able to set us straight on this. Is it true that?
Sure, because it may be rumor.
Well, and if it is a rumor that someone heard and shared with me, then let's put it straight. Are the officers forbidden to wear a flag pin?
This is ridiculous. No.
Are they forbidden to wear the thin blue line pin?
We have not forbidden them to wear those pins.
Okay.
If you have an officer that would like to direct their questions to me, they could certainly do so. I could answer that for them. They could read into the policy some and understand that those are things that we've allowed.
We all receive phone calls, all of us, from general citizenry all over the place. So I'm just relaying what general citizens ask me about.
I appreciate it.
And you know, how do they, you know, short of them calling in, and a lot of them are shy about making those kinds of phone calls.
I appreciate it. I'd encourage you to, much like Mr. Amos and other council people, to give me a call directly. I would certainly love to answer them in a forum that doesn't require us to have a personalized session. I'm certainly available. I'm always able to answer your questions, and I would love to put these things to rest as soon as you hear them. That'd be great.
Well, let's do it now. Is it true that the officers all have to be qualified on a firearm to serve? That that's policy, that they have to be qualified?
Yes, yes.
Is it true that the chief has to be qualified?
That is true.
Is it true that you are not qualified?
Not at this time. I am given a qualification extension of over six more months to be qualified. That's an interesting question, because, you know, I've been a police officer for 30 years, and I've qualified in every state. And unfortunately, in this state, I have had shoulder surgeries that have stopped me from being able to do the physical qualification. But I will tell you that I have never not qualified in any state that I've worked in. So you can put the, I think what you could do is put the folks at ease and tell them that that'll happen, you know. I haven't had a problem getting qualified in Pennsylvania or Texas, so I don't see this as being a problem either.
Great. Are the officers required to always wear body cams and body armor?
Officers are. Patrol officers, those that are typically on the street, the majority of their, I should say, the majority of their tour of duty and are assigned to administrative functions are responsible for that.
And you, as a chief, if you go to a crime scene, are you required to wear body armor and?
I'm not, and because I may go to a crime scene, if I'm going to, let's say, a community meeting, I certainly would, you know, be en route to a community meeting and stop at a crime scene first. So fortunately, as the chief, I've been able to stop a few people that were wanted for shootings and other things that are really important. So, you know, in doing so, I, you know, don't necessarily always have a active body cam available, nor should any of the people assigned to command staff. That's for the police officers. That's why I advocated for the new body worn cameras that you guys approved, I'm sorry, that everyone else on council approved, and that, you know, I want to ensure that everybody from top to bottom has access to the same type of equipment. So I'd rather my officers have access to that equipment than me taking it or Joe taking it from another person within the department.
Okay, and along that line of questioning, I just have one more. Do we do exit interviews with officers that have decided?
If the officers care to.
It isn't a policy that we do?
It's not a policy.
So you're not particularly aware of their feelings about the department?
I didn't say that. You said that. That wasn't a question.
Well, I meant it as a question.
I am very aware of some of the people that have left the police department who were unwilling to conform with some of the changes that have been made, like some of the policy changes that were ordered through council that we needed to change. Some were very dissatisfied with that, and with that dissatisfaction, you get attrition. When a new police chief takes over in a new city, you're not going to have everyone that likes the fact that we have to change. I have a statement that I live by. It was, I was a much better police chief when I was a police officer. So that accounts for every one of us from top to bottom in the police agency that thinks, absent all the rest of the information, that they would do something differently. Again, I'm working to balance this level of service that we give the people in the community. I'm working to make sure the officers get the support and the equipment and everything that they need to do their jobs, and I think we've made tremendous strides. So if by some chance those who have left the agency are unhappy, oh, I mean, I know and I'm aware that some are unhappy, but I also know that the majority of people who I speak with are very happy with the things that are happening here. So I take that with a grain of salt.
Okay, getting back to the violence, which is why I called this. With that, with it being said that we have, first of all, the loss of life was absolutely tragic. Second of all, two of the homicides that I got the absolute most calls on were the shooting in the after-hours and then the Fourth Street shooting. What do we get, what are we doing to make sure that people feel protected coming in?
Coming in?
Coming in to join us at my Waterloo Days Parade at Juneteenth, at Irish Fest, at RAG-BRI. We're having a lot clustered downtown and.
No, we're not. That's an inaccurate statement, and I would think that you wouldn't want to perpetuate the, I thought, that our downtown area is plagued by violence, which it is not.
And do we have plans in place to have an extra police presence?
We certainly, we actually have a, you know, one of the things that I instituted when I got here was mandatory operational planning. People weren't happy about that, but that is one of the things that I have changed in this department that we do. So we have operational plans that we use for each and every event. We also have cost analysis that we do for each and every event, something else that wasn't been, that wasn't being done during the planning process. So our planning P gets done with a great deal of input and a great deal of forethought about this community and to ensure that we are providing the right and appropriate amount of protection for these events. So you'll find that we brought in other city departments to talk about these events. We brought in fire, we brought in public works. We've had meetings and talked and discussed who would have what role, and those roles are written down. Those roles are done so in an incident command model that we should be expected to be presented in, and, you know, we do things that way for a reason, and they're not generally shared with anyone outside of police or fire or those that are involved, but we do it nonetheless.
I appreciate your answers, and I turn it over to anyone else with a question.
And I believe on June 21st, Marty, what's his?
Task Force? Task Force would be after hours establishments.
So the 21st, if I'm not mistaken, Marty is going to have his task force information to address violence at after-hours establishments. And also, if I'm not mistaken, on June 10th, we have a meeting with the downtown business owners to talk about plans, holistic plans that we have for making sure that people feel comfortable and safe in the downtown area. So thank the chief for working to put that strategy together along with his, with his staff as well.
I thank you and downtown, the downtown Waterloo folks. We needed that bridge, and I wanted to be able to explain what it was we were doing down there, and you guys made it possible. So thank you.
Mr. Bozeman?
Just a quick question, chief. We talked about this when we had our meeting with council officials. I brought this up, and it had to do with the automated traffic enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Under Chief Treloch, we entered a contract with the county government for six tablets so that our officers could write municipal infractions from the calls. Did that fall by the wayside? Did we, what happened to that program? Did we get the tablets? Have we moved forward with it?
I had no knowledge of that, but.
I, we talked briefly about it at that fireworks meeting.
I do not know that the tablets have been issued or are up and running. Joe, would you be able to shed any light on that?
So did it just fall by the wayside, or was it someone we got making a light pursuit of the future?
I know it was talked about, but it never moved past that stage.
Okay, because we did, the council did authorize a contract so that it would be revenue generation. Okay, thanks.
Well, you know, I've been an advocate of having those in the cars to save time. All a police officer has to do is swipe the driver's license through, and, you know, there's a printer inside the car usually there to help generate the tickets and such. So I'll definitely open that back up, and forgive me if I, you know, said that I would look into it and I didn't, but I certainly will.
Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, chief. So I want to talk a little bit about the body cameras. Most of us approve the body cameras. I've, I personally firmly believe that having a body camera keeps police officers safe, keeps our citizens safe, keeps us transparent, keeps us functioning as a city. Can you just update us on where we are at in that process?
I just got the training update today.
Okay.
Do you recall when the first day of training is, Joe? Or could you, could you bring that email up? What we're doing is, we have to incrementally train everyone in the department on how to operate the, I'm sorry, how to operate the body camera, how to operate the in-car system, how to engage not only the body cam functionality, but retrieve the information from the body cams, the difference in like the TASER equipment as well. So we have a couple aggressively scheduled training modules for officers. If you can give me the dates, Joe, if you got it?
It's like the 16th.
Okay. Sure. And then my, my second question, you hear a lot about budgets, and budgets are really what makes things go.
Yes, sir.
So, and I know this is, you're just wrapping up your first year now, but generally, what has happened over the last five years, if you have that data, or 10 years? What has happened to the police budget? Are we in line with our sister cities? Are we above? Are we below? If we're looking at those 67,000-plus resident cities, is our department being funded at levels that are comparable to other cities to deal with what we're dealing with?
I'd love to give you that answer. I don't want to misspeak and then say, I will, in my personal opinion, in one year, I would love to see more dedicated to the training environment, because I believe for retention purposes, an investment in training for officers helps us retain people and helps us attract people. We have a pretty minimal training budget, and I think that might be the one area in one year's time I would tell you that I would change. But if you'd like me to look at the other areas and give you an answer, should you say other cities for a comp, I will do that.
If you could. And also, I always thank you for being available. You know, I've had people email me, call me with rumors and other things, and thank you for being open to set the record straight on a one-to-one level.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate you giving it right to me, you know? I can't change things if I don't hear them.
Yeah, just one final comment, if I may. On a nationwide basis, we're hearing more and more about violence, and there's just been some terrible mass shootings. I commend all of the police officers for doing such a good job of taking care of crime in our city. It's not as bad as some people are making it appear to be. I think you're doing an incredible job, especially in light of what is going on on a national basis. Thank you. Since you've been here, you've implemented a lot of good things, and we're very appreciative.
I appreciate it. Thank you for feedback.
All right, and chief, thank you for the reports. Thank you for the PowerPoint. Thank you for answering questions or rumors, standing up to the mic and answering those questions. So we respect you and we thank you for your service, sir, and we appreciate all the work that's being done in the department, so thank you.
Thank you. I have some five-year stuff. If you don't mind, I'll step out, make some copies, and just give them to everybody in council and Kelly, you know, in case you want to publish it, but it just gives you five years of perspective on a crime.
So I think we've been hearing it's been, I guess, who had, who came up with five years?
Oh, I did.
Okay. Like, I'm wondering where that number came, because that's ironically the number of the years I've been in office. But what is, what is, just really quickly before Mr. Treeler, what, is it up or down or is it stagnant or?
Well, we're down. You know, from 2015, if we start from 2015 to 2016, you're looking at down 2.71%. 2016 to 2017, down 3.52%, you know, and then slightly down in the next year, 1.7%. Down a little further, 4.03%, then 7.04%. So, you know, these are, you know, in major, you know, major crime areas. We are, again, these officers, you know, we were fine to saying that we're grumpy and that we complain a lot and everything else, but they are doing a fantastic job, despite any rumor or innuendo. The guys go out there and do a hell of a job with what they have, and that's been consistent over the last couple of years. Again, I'm very proud to be a part of this department and proud of them and proud of my command staff for doing what they've done over the last few years, but you should all know and see this.
And our lawsuits are down as well.
And I got, yes, they are, and I have to apologize because when I gave Kelly this information, I did not incorporate that five-year crime stat in it, I don't believe, so I'll make sure you get it.
All right, thank you. All right, and thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
And as we transition to Mr. Treelor, as we transition to Mr. Treelor.
Let me thank Pat and Kelly for swapping. I appreciate that as well.
He had to rock a little bit to get off.
But I think the budget, budget increase, police-wise, 23% in five years? I think the budget has increased by about 20, 23%, but just need to make sure it's increasing in the right places.
Yeah.
Good evening, council. Are we ready to go, Mr. Mayor?
Hey, yes, sir.
Whoever you are.
I think I'm ready. So Pat Treelor, Fire Chief, I'm excited to give you an update on the department, where we're at, where I think we're going, and just give you kind of a quick SWAT analysis, if you will, of our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. There'll be just kind of a quick presentation, but I think you'll get a good idea where we're at. So first of all, we're 113 total members of the department. A hundred of us are sworn of that, excuse me, 110 of us are sworn of that, 110 sworn, 105 work on shift. So we operate three shifts, A, B, and C shift. So our goal with having the safer grant, where you approved four individuals we hired on under a federal grant, our goal is to have 35 per shift. We have, currently, we have three open positions. We've had a couple of surprise retirements with another one coming by the end of June, we expect, so we'll have four open positions. And then sadly, we have four long-term injuries right now. So you could view us as being eight personnel down. Of our sworn personnel, I broke it down there on the, on the slide for you. I'm not going to go through it all, but we have one chief, and I say that kind of with a smile. We don't have an assistant chief here in Waterloo. We haven't had, excuse me, we haven't had for probably 20-plus years. We're very light on administrative staffing compared to other departments our size. You can see we have three battalion chiefs, one chief per shift, and they operate on shift, they're a 24-hour employee, and those are the three other non-bargaining personnel that are sworn, is myself and the three battalion chiefs. The rest are in the, in the local union 66. We do have three administrative staff, civilian staff, and then you can see the breakdown with the rest of the shifts. Oftentimes, cities talk about how many firefighters they have per thousand residents. In Waterloo, we're right about 1.6 firefighters per 1,000 residents. If you were to poll the state, we're somewhere in the middle, so we're not, you know, we're not high-staffed, we're not low-staffed, we're somewhere in the middle with that number, the 1.6. So I just thought I'd give you a quick overview of how we're doing call-wise. In 2019, we had 11,168 911 calls, or what we call calls for service. In 2020, which is the number up on the slide before you're there, it, you can see it's 11,341, so it's a slight increase. Those are 911 calls. Sometimes a 911 call generates one unit response, and in other calls, it may be eight or nine units. So that 11,341, you can see that it was a total response of 14,000. One particular note on there, our average travel time of four minutes and twenty-two seconds, you see it listed there. That is the time it takes when we receive the dispatch information, so it comes over the tones at the stations. On average, we're on scene in four minutes and twenty-two seconds, which is outstanding. There's some large metro areas around the country that are three or four times, um, that response time. So, so we're very proud, we're very proud of that. On the EMS side, um, I just kind of thought I'd break it down a little bit for you. All of our sworn personnel are required to be emergency medical technicians or EMTs, but we have a higher level of, uh, an EMT and it's called a paramedic, and you can see there, we've listed, we have forty-nine paramedics right now. I'd like to see that number somewhere in the sixties. The training has gotten a lot longer over the years. It's more difficult to get, uh, personnel into the, uh, classes at Hawkeye because there's prerequisites that are involved, and there's a national and local shortage of paramedics, but we're still pleased we have forty-nine of our hundred and ten sworn are, are medics. A few years ago, we implemented a medical supervisor type of quick response vehicle. We worked with Public Works on it. It was a suburban, and, uh, we've seen a lot of good results with that. Our medical supervisor is assigned to that vehicle. It has all the equipment, uh, except for a cot, we cannot transport to the hospital, but that individual, uh, Jason Hernandez is our medical supervisor, provides field supervision of our medics, but more importantly, he'll go on, uh, a lot of our serious calls as well as releasing an ambulance, uh, from a scene. For example, if there's a death, oftentimes, we need to wait for the medical examiner to come. That'll hold up an ambulance sometimes, depending on how busy the medical examiner is, well over an hour. So then the medical supervisor will go out with his vehicle, release the ambulance, which is appropriate, and wait for the, uh, medical examiner. So that's been working well for us. We have one of the busiest ambulances in the state. We're not necessarily proud of it, but our ambulance that runs out of our downtown station, you can see on the slide there, they transported twenty-five hundred and thirty, uh, patients in two thousand twenty. So that's a large percentage of our transports. We're still trying to figure out an appropriate way to share that workload while still offering, uh, great response times. So we know where our business is, where our frequently called to areas, and it's in the downtown area. It somewhat follows the river. All right. So revenue overview, you can see there, if you had a chance to take a look at this, um, in two thousand twenty, we had a significant increase in revenue, and then in this current fiscal year that's just ending, we're projecting being somewhere right about four point six million dollars. So you can see in seventeen and eighteen, we're approximately one point eight million. In nineteen, we had a little dip to one point seven, and then in two thousand twenty, we're at, uh, three point three million. So, and that's predominantly due to the ground emergency medical transport that you've probably heard me speak of plenty of times. And I've got another slide on it, I can go in a little bit more detail. But, so for this current fiscal year, we amended our budget, worked with CFO Weiner and the mayor. We amended it, uh, about one point two million to get it to the three point two million. And so obviously, we're still going to be one point three million over the amended amount, because like I said, we're projecting four point six million revenue at the end of this fiscal year. It's hard not to smile when I say it, but it's really good news. So there are costs involved with the ground emergency medical, uh, transport, the GMT. There's certainly, uh, costs involved, and I'll discuss it right now in the next, uh, next slide. So the program is a federal initiative designed to help services like Waterloo Fire that serve Medicaid patients. So what the, what the federal government's basically has said, prove to us what your cost per run is, and we'll make it right when you transport a Medicaid patient. So on the slide there, you can see the average payment before the GMT was a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a transport. Now, on top of that hundred and twenty-five dollars, the federal government provides eight hundred and thirty-one dollars on top of that, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Out of that, we've listed some expenses that we have there, and you can see we have a Digitech payment of twenty-seven oh five. So we use a, a billing company that does a phenomenal job for us out of New York. They take a percentage of net revenue, and on the GMT portion, they take two point five percent. So you can see we pay, on every Medicaid call, we pay twenty-seven dollars to our billing company, and then there's a thing called the state share. So the federal government and the state, Iowa State Enterprise, Medicaid Enterprise, got together and say, look, this is a partnership. So we'll give you this, we'll give you this money to your providers, but then you need to pay back the state share. Very confusing. Um, if Michelle's still in the room, she can nod her head that it's confusing.
She is.
Okay. That's good. I wasn't going to turn around. And then, uh, we also have a cost of, uh, we've hired a consultant because there's an enormous amount of work that goes along with this. There's audits, we're under audit right now from, uh, state Medicaid, and, uh, our, our consultant, um, gets eleven percent of revenue under this program. So there are, there are expenses, uh, involved. So why is our, our revenue so high this year? And I'm not going to try to confuse anybody, but basically, we've got a million dollars of revenue in this year's budget that technically should have been paid in last year's budget from the feds. So if you look at our projection for next year, we're predict, projecting revenue at three point six million. We're gonna, we're gonna end at four point six million this year, and that's because there's a million dollars in there from the previous year. So if you see that we're gonna, we're projecting a million dollars less next year, that's why. So our budget for twenty-two is set at three point six million. Okay. So I wanted to talk about some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and talk about strengths to start off with. We feel we have the, we have public trust and we certainly have the support of the community, and we're very respectful of that. Another strength we have is obviously our members' dedication, their commitment, their training, their knowledge. I see it day in and day out. It's, we've got a phenomenal group. ISO rating, if you remember that, that's Insurance Service Organization, it's a privately held or privately funded company that tells insurance companies what a rating of a fire department is, their effectiveness at protecting infrastructure within the community. One being the best, ten being kind of really hard to get insurance, we're at a two. So that's very good for our corporate, um, citizens. If you own an average house and we say went to an ISO rated four, ISO rating five for some reason, your rates probably aren't going to be affected much, but our corporate, uh, citizens or corporate businesses would see an increase. We operate FireBase EMS. I mean, I, we thought it was a great thing before the GMT came along. I think it's even a better system. We've cross-trained, we have paramedics on fire trucks today that can help paramedics that are on the ambulance, they can hop in, add a three-man crew. Uh, we're blessed to have FireBase EMS. Our response times, I mentioned, are very good compared to others in the state and very, very good compared to the rest of the country. And obviously, uh, we feel the EMS revenue is a real strength. So some weaknesses, we got to talk about those. Aging fleets, I think we do a very good job. Randy and his crew does a good job, uh, keeping our equipment on the road, but we do have a lot of old equipment. And we got a, we got a lot of old members, so we're, uh, we're getting a little bit older. There's a number of us that are, uh, very close to retirement, so we think that's a weakness of the organization. Succession plan to go along with all those aging members, we got to do a better job of that. Our department is lacking diversity. We'd like to see it increased. We've made some, uh, strides in doing that. Recently, we've hired, uh, two women, we have two more women on our list. Uh, we anticipate, uh, being able to hire, uh, coming up sometime in the near future after hiring delays, uh, over, but, um, so we think we're, we're making some progress on the lack of diversity. Station closures, we're still rounding out Station Six, that's a definite weakness. Uh, organizationally, we need to make some sort of shift to be able to accept change, uh, better within the, the culture of the fire department. I'm willing to take suggestions on how to get that done.
Good luck.
I've taken a few classes on it, we're working on it with our command staff, we're making some progress, but that's definitely a weakness. And administrative training was very, very hard for us to find the previous year, you know, through the pandemic. So that, that's a weakness. We need to do, we need to give our administrative staff, our, our battalion chiefs, our admins, uh, we need to give them, uh, better training. Okay, some opportunities that, uh, we're working on. One of our organizational goals was to train and work closer with, uh, Waterloo PD. We conducted a tabletop exercise recently at our training center. We had probably, probably seven command staff from, uh, Waterloo PD and probably eight of us at FIRE. So we wa, went through an active shooter type of situation, and then we've agreed upon, we're going to do a, a full-scale exercise in August, so we're pretty excited about that. We work well with Waterloo PD, they work well with us, we just don't often train, uh, together that often. Officer development, uh, that's a huge opportunity for us. We're working on a program, we've got a battalion chief coming up with a program there, so we develop our officers properly. An opportunity, it's a huge one, it's become an accredited fire department. It's a massive job, it's basically a full-time position for a year. I've talked to many departments that have gone through it. Uh, I can't do it on my own, so we're, we're still trying to look at an avenue of how to become accredited. And I'd like to see more of our members, uh, attend the National Fire Academy. It's, it's free to our members, the feds pay for their travel, pay for their meal ticket, pay for their, uh, lodging there. I've been five or six times, I know, uh, Councilman Bozen's been out a number of times. So that's an opportunity. And then some of our threats, I'll just go through them quick, I know we're mad on timing, but, uh, I think you could probably hear this, it's threats from any department, but, uh, reduced funding could be a threat, reduced staffing. Hazards of the job with going through the pandemic, uh, we seem to have a lot more mental illness in our community. We just had a very violent patient today that we had some exposures on. So hazards of the jobs are obviously threats. We're seeing a little bit, like Waterloo PD, the hiring pool is being diminished, so the talent pool is a little bit smaller, competition for these jobs is, is very high. Uh, member mental health, uh, we're concerned with all of our members' me, uh, mental health, but the last year of the pandemic sure showed that we're vulnerable to that. Uh, and I'd just throw in there, overuse of electronic communications. I know you're probably all, uh, were sick of Zoom. I certainly was. We had a number of meetings throughout the year that, that weren't in person. We had a staff meeting, uh, this morning, all in person, so, uh, I was pleased with that. So we're going to try to reduce a lot of our communications through electronic, uh, means. But that's all I had for you, and, uh, I'd certainly be open to any questions you may have.
Mr. Bozen.
Quick, uh, question, Chief, on the one point six firefighters per one thousand, the average range with other cities in the state. We're FireBase EMS, so we have X amount of paramedics assigned to the ambulance, and that, that function as firefighters, not, do these other cities, we're comparing them to, uh, the one point six of FireBase EMS, or are they, are they all firefighters?
Yeah, not all of them. No, they don't all have EMS. So like, for example, today, we have, uh, Station Six is open, so we have twenty-seven on shift today, six of those twenty-seven are assigned to the ambulance, where some other departments may not have that.
We actually do have less than one point six firefighters, a lot of those are, are functional firefighters.
Correct. And for a true comparison, you would back out the six per shift that Waterloo has, say, up against Iowa City that doesn't run, um, FireBase EMS?
The last thing is, is your administration's flat. Everyone goes to fires, you know, and, and the chief, if you, if you can find in our budget to, to support administrative assistant chief, then you can, that would really help your department out of the business.
Yeah, I, I think the, the first thing we'd do is put that, if we had an assistant chief, would be in charge of operations. A lot of my days spent administratively with, uh, personnel issues, uh, budget-related issues. Uh, my admin is leaving the end of June, um, so I'm just going to be swamped with some of the admin stuff, but it's been a goal, I just haven't been willing to take the hit on shift, uh, to pull someone off the line or lose a position online, uh, so I'd have an assistant. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Ms. Jewen.
Yeah, just a quick question on the accreditation. Sounds like a lot of work. What, what are the benefits of doing that?
Well, the, the benefits are, it, it forces you to look at where you're lacking within the organization. So whether it be through standard operating guidelines, your rules and regs, your training format, the list goes on and on and on. You know, I-
How often do you have to do that, go through that accreditation?
Every five years, um, but the first accreditation process is very, very long. It's difficult, I've looked at it, I've taken some training on it. Um, that would be, that would be another, uh, avenue if we did happen to get an administrative chief or assistant chief at some point. That'd be, uh, a, a goal to become accredited.
Thank you.
Mrs. Klein.
I just want to tell you, that was a great report. I just felt it was very straightforward, and you talked about your achievements. This is, this is from the top down. I just think you're doing a great job, and I hope you will take back my best wishes to everyone who works in the fire business.
Okay.
From, from the firemen, to the medical people, to the secretary or whatever.
I think they all deserve a pat on the back.
Well, thank you. I will, for sure. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief, uh, just a, maybe just a couple of questions. Um, as we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, what's the, what's been the open status of Station Six for this, this year?
I wouldn't have that number right off the top of my head, I can certainly get it for you, Mr. Voice.
Okay.
Um, I would say it'd be very similar to the previous year, um, but I can get you that number, and I can email it to all Council if, if you'd like that.
And, and then in regards to that, what, what's the status of the overtime situation? I know, you know, we're talking about reducing the, for next year, um, the, the overtime budget, do you anticipate? I, I mean, I'm hopeful with getting four, while you have to find four firefighters, you know, and, and have them, but what, where are we at in terms of how much we spent in overtime this year? Do you have any idea?
Sure. Well, I, this current year, we're, um, budgeted a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, if I remember correct. We're somewhere down below, we probably have somewhere around ten thousand left. Next fiscal year's beginning July one, our overtime budget was reduced seventy-eight thousand to a hundred thousand. So June, July, and August, we're anticipating Station Six being closed a fair bit. The policy moving forward, beginning July one, I just told staff this morning, is that we'll hire one firefighter back on overtime to keep the station open. We're not going to hire two, three, four. Some days last summer, we're hiring five or six, uh, personnel back. We'll just, we'll just blow through that hundred thousand before the end of September, so, uh, you know, it's not a, it's not a positive thing, but Station Six will be browned out.
Yep. Just curious. Thank you.
Mr. Walker. Mr. Greg Reiter. So Chief, as a son of a firefighter, I want to thank you and all of your staff for what they do. I know what that is and what that means for your people, especially mental health-wise, and I can only imagine what this last year was. Um, can you just give us an update on the SAFER grant and where we're at in that process? Because like Councilman Voice, I share concerns about Station Six being browned out. I get, obviously, the cost and that kind of stuff, but I was, we talked about the SAFER grant as a way to mitigate that. So where are we at in that process?
Well, so the four are currently on, they're hired. Uh, we've done, uh, one of our first downloads from the federal government, so we've, we've been paid what we've asked for. We've notified them of the hiring delay that was put in our budget, uh, twice, I did not hear back on that. Um, but, so to answer your question, the four are hired, but sadly, the, we're going to be, we're going to be four short, uh, with four openings. I'm anticipating being able to fill those four openings at the end of September. I think that'll be the timeframe to get rid of the, not get rid of, use up the, uh, hiring delay that's been put in our budget. So we're anticipating, uh, October first, we would bring on the four members that were going to be short.
And one of the concerns when we talked about the SAFER grant was what happens when the grant runs out and how do we pay for them? But you talked about the attrition of, of a slightly aging department. Do you still think that it's very likely we'll be able to transition these people into positions through attrition at this- to transition these people into positions through attrition at this current juncture?
Well, if I understand what you're saying, I mean, I would hope that the council would keep us at our authorized level. So whether there was positions to go to or not, I would hope that we would be kept at 110 sworn. But with that said, we're going to have number, a number of openings over the next two to three years, that if council was not able to keep us at 110, if we went to 106, I think we'd be able to take them back into the department, and we would have openings.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, Chief, we're coming to the conclusion, just like, you know, our conversation with Chief Fitzgerald, I want to thank you and your department's leadership. People probably don't know the significant role that all of you played to help us through COVID. So you and Hernandez, your entire staff, and just like PD, kind of put yourselves on the line by having direct interaction with people. And I know there's a lot of cases that had gone through. So we want to thank you so much for the pursuit of excellence with all of your department as well. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good job.
Motion to adjourn?
May we adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.